Okay, good. All right. So, good morning. This is this is March, Monday, March 15. I'm Tim Colley, Mayor of the Village of Millbrook, along with Mike Herzog, Deputy Mayor of the Village. The reason we're doing this call is because I did not record the call of our actual Board of Trustees meeting on Wednesday, March 10. And so the official record will be the minutes from the clerk. But as far as, as as publication of the meeting, we have no record of it. And so what we're doing now is going to redo in summary fashion, the agenda, the actual meeting that occurred on the 10th as this, as a record, we can actually post on Channel 22 for the residents to view. And Deputy Mayor Herzog is here to help me along with the agenda as we walk through it. We did not bring the full board together because if we do that, we have to actually have a public notice. And basically, we have to redo the whole meeting. We just can't afford to do that at this point. And so what we're doing here is to do the a review of what happened at the meeting. And Mike, please, you'll jump in as appropriate as I go through what happened. So we kicked off the meeting with a pledge allegiance to rural trustees. Everyone was here except for Kevin McGrane. And that was the first point of discussion that I announced that Kevin, due to personal reasons, has had to give us notice that he's resigned from the Village Board of Trustees. And while we are sad for him to have made the announcement, we support his rationale and wish him the best. And as far as his replacement, I will be appointing a replaced, replacement for Kevin, but not until we've completed the budget process, which we are in the middle of. So it's going to take us a month or so to complete the budget process. And after which time, we will then proceed with the typical solicitation of requests for people who are interested, review, interview, whatever, and then following an appointment for a placement. That was the first news report. The second thing is that we have some good news to announce, which was that a village resident, James Mastery, has achieved a rank of Eagle Scout last month. And Mike, you know the person personally, so I'd like you to just say a few words about James' accomplishment and achieving that, that role.
Sure. Well, James, James is a quiet spoken, hardworking scout. The kind of person who is a leader by example. Get pretty, pretty good at everything. And he supervised an Eagle project, building a set of shelves for storing files down in our downstairs area. Involved about a dozen volunteers and allowed us to be able to get a number of files put away that we needed to, that were sitting on floors. This was not good. And I'd say basically, he did, did an excellent job and he's on his way in the fall to start college and I'm very proud of him and very feel really good that he to do a fine job going forward as a scout and as a citizen.
Okay, good. Thanks. It's quite an accomplishment to make a chief Eagle Scout. So it's a very nice statement for the village. Very proud of him.
Okay, I should probably just say it also quickly. The taxpayers owe him a debt of gratitude because the fact that he, he did this project, he, he got all the donations he needed by raising funds outside of the outside of the village budget and between the labor and the, and the materials probably saved the, saved the village, the taxpayers about a thousand dollars by constructing the, the shelves in that project.
Very good. Okay, good. All right, let's move on. Here's the agenda. We've already talked about the good news and also the bad news about Kevin. We have some administrative business we'll be going over. We will talk about the health emergency plan that we put in place. We did receive board approval for that as well as our specific COVID protocols for the village. We've got the standard agenda of department reports from each of the of the heads of those areas. Old business, nothing, new business I did add, and we'll spend a minute talking about the Janet Farms LLC, which is getting a lot of press around the town right now. And then board member updates. And schedule for the next meeting. So that's basically the agenda. First off was the, the minutes we reviewed, the minutes presented by the clerk and approved those from the last meeting with no changes. Vouchers. Here's the list of the summary of the vouchers for the month. And in here, just to note, you can see the Police Department. So this month, we've received the new police vehicle. That's why the reserve fund was applied to $40,000 to pay for that. We also received a new highway dump truck. $100,000. You see, that also is on the reserves. So those are funds that we expended. We have taken loans out from the bank about four-year loans that we'll use the cash to pay for those vehicles. And we now will be paying off the loan over the next four years for each of those capital assets. The next item on the agenda was the before we got to the fire department, was the employer health emergency plan, which was presented to the board, is posted on the website under a policy section. Basically, this was a request from New York State that the village identify what is the procedure we're going to follow in the event of another pandemic that occurs. So what do we learn from COVID-19? And so what is the emergency plan that we're going to use in the event that another pandemic, pandemic hits the village? We filed a template provided to us by actually Hyde Park. And basically, put in the personalized the the template for the villages' resources. And you can see on the website, all the different nuances of things we will do the next time we get involved with a pandemic. Hopefully, it doesn't happen. But if it does, based on this, we should have some level of start in terms of preparation for such an event. The next review was the specific protocols used in the village today by each of the department heads regarding COVID-19. And so this is just a documentation of what procedures are followed on a daily basis by the employees and by the volunteers use municipal equipment or vehicles or whatever, buildings, just to follow to prevent the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Mike, any comments or questions there?
No, just to, just that a lot of these were developed not only through using the template from from Hyde Park, and we thank Aileen Rohr for being able to provide that for us, but also the fact that a lot of the, a lot of the things we did, we did in conjunction with a lot of other municipalities throughout the county. Because as mayor, in the latter part of 2020, as well as yourself in 2021, we attended weekly meetings that were that were going on along the county and that where, where all of these different things were being done by the different municipalities, and we learned from one another on what was working and what wasn't working. And that's so this is a, it's tailored for Millbrook, but there was a lot of input from a lot of other supervisors and mayors who had suggestions and, and ideas on how they were going to handle COVID in their own areas. So that was
Yeah, it was. It was based on best practices identified from different municipalities, which I think is why the exercise was a worthwhile thing to do.
Yeah, it was. And I think it, it prepared us, it will prepare us for hopefully no more surges. But if a surge happens and, you know, we'll be more than, more than ready to be able to take care of, take care of what happens.
Right. And as I said, it's now listed under the policies sections on the village website for those of you who want to review it. Okay. All right. Next was the fire department. It gave us a report summarizing the activities for the last month. Total number of fire calls was 78, which is about the same as it was the month before. And there's the EMS calls 53 from NDP, which is our paid 24/7 EMS service and 12 from the volunteer squad. Okay, no other comments of note there. Then Jared, Officer Jared Witt, reported on the monthly police department. There were 112 incidents total, again, about the same numbers last month. And here's the details. And I don't recall that there was anything, anything significant, Mike, that was highlighted here as far as new news items or follow-up requirements.
No, the only thing I would add is the fact that when I was doing, when I was doing the police reform work that a lot of the people from the community who were making comments and suggestions were totally unaware of a lot of the types of incidents that the police respond to on a regular basis, as well as they were extremely surprised by the amount of, the amount of community service types of incidents that are being handled by the police to help the general public the majority of what, what they do. So it was, it was eye-opening for them. And so for anyone who was interested, if you're going to be attending these meetings virtually by being on Zoom and, or by watching them on, watching them on Channel 22, pay special attention to the monthly reports because you can learn an awful lot about what are all the good things our police department are currently doing to not only keep the community safe, but to help the community in ways you may not realize.
Good. Okay. Yeah, for example, you can see there are house checks, you know, there were 26 house checks last month, basically either by people requesting or just because of suspicious calls, the police go out and just check to see if there's anything suspicious going on there. So a lot of things we do that are beyond just writing tickets. Okay, the next topic was, Mike, the police reform. You were spirited this effort here. So just run us through quickly the result of the police reform modernization activity that you were involved in.
Yes, I just, the first point, this is a report and plan that we have to send to Albany by April 1st. That will be reviewed by the executive branch of the, of the state and was something that was required of us. And we knew about it as far, far back as the fall of 2020. So this is, this is the result of a number of meetings that I, that I attended right on through from August until December, usually one, one, once every week or two weeks at the most, where we discussed how the police forces are operating in different municipalities across Dutchess County. And during that period, we, we talked about what all the, all the best practices, I guess, would be a good term of what was going on in each of those areas. We received information from Dutchess County residents and suggestions and proposals that could be adopted by local municipalities. So all of that was, was shared. After four months of meetings, I asked, I asked residents to join by holding a stakeholder, by asking, by forming a stakeholder committee that could also give us their own personal thoughts on what things could be done in order to be able to make the police force more efficient and more, and more modernized. And we met twice in the village hall and then came up with using those suggestions. We came up with a plan, we came up with a plan, we forwarded those to the board for review. And essentially, the elements of the plan were developed. The final version was was adopted on March 10th, and the plan was, will be forwarded now to the, to New York, New York State. Briefly, well, I'm going to just try to summarize these, each of these bullets. But the first thing is that Officer Witt, who is the officer in charge, is going to be putting together a detailed report of all of the different kind of incidents that are recorded for the entire year so that the general public can get some idea on what the police budget covers and also the kinds of incidents they respond to. And that will be on the website with a link so that it's now been completed. And the residents who want to know for 2020, what the police department has been doing can do so by being able to click on that link and be able to find out from that report how many instances they responded to and of what kinds. The second recommendation that was taken care of was that the board made a commitment in order to be able to increase the training funds for this year. That goes from June 1st to 20, of 2021, 2020 to, to the end of May of 2021. And we're going to be sending the police in the second half of the, of the year with new budget to, to more training, in this case, anti-bias training. And in the first six months of this year, we, of 2000, of 2020, we also made sure that all the police had, had procedural justice training that was offered to the county as well. The third thing is we're going to establish a community review board by July of this year to review all formal complaints made by the general public. We're going to have the review board be comprised of a, of the village officer in charge or alternate senior officer, a village board member and an appointed resident of the village to review all complaints. The board will meet as necessary to review any of these complaints, but at least once during the year to recommend any policy changes or procedures they feel are necessary to the board. The fourth thing is that the officer in charge will implement an adoption of the procedural justice practices and enforcing laws. And he'll make sure that in all of the enforcement issues that procedural justice practices are being used. The fifth recommendation is that the village board will, will try to strive to be able to increase diversity among the police department employees. And so when considering future hiring, when it's done, that will be, that will be one of the criteria. Sixth thing is the village board will provide more police information to the residents, not only through an annual report, but also through quarterly billing mailings, monthly news newsletter, internet postings and in-person gatherings such as the weekly farmers market events and the annual community celebrations. The seventh point was all police officers will complete the training that I mentioned by the end of 2021. The eighth, that the police department's schedules will establish more out-of-potro car community policing on foot in the commercial district so that they can engage with shop owners and the general public and increase the visibility of the police officers on both day and night shifts. And Officer Jared will be communicating that to his officers and that will happen as the schedules his normal, normal patrols. Ninth point, the present village of Millbrook Policy and Procedures Manual will be reviewed by the officer in charge and the deputy mayor. The present Dutchess County Sheriff Policy and Procedure Manual, which has been, has been updated very recently, will be our guide. And we're going to adopt practices that we feel are appropriate for Millbrook and have that done by the end of 2022, given the scope of how long it's going to take to be able to take care of all of that. Tenth point is that a village board member will review the code as it applies to signage, speed limits, parking restrictions and enforceable offenses. Trustee Contino will be doing that in, by the end of 2021. The 11th point of the village board member will investigate the feasibility of using automatic cameras set up in high-traffic areas to detect speeding violations and and mayor, we, we had Testing McGrane in charge of that, but since he has resigned, you are going to give that responsibility to a different trustee.
Right.
Okay, I'm not sure who that is at this point. Yeah. And the last point is we're going to explore the cost of body cameras for initial purchase, but also for the storage cost of all recorded materials. The length of time footage would legally have to be kept available and the use of grants for purchase of all police equipment in the future. And trustee Arbogast is going to be in charge of that so that by the end of 21, we can see how we can be able to add to whatever equipment is necessary and see if there's any money out there outside of village taxes to be able to pay for. So that's
Thanks, Mike. And since these are posted on the website, there was not much discussion, there was no public comment. And so the village board approved submitting these as our recommendations to the, to the state, right?
Yes. And the only thing I have to do now is find out by calling Albany exactly where they want these, this plan and who the poor person is who has to now be responsible for reviewing hundreds of these plans to be able then certify them as being viable. And I don't believe we're going to get any pushback from the state based on types of other plans that we know are available from other municipalities.
Okay, good. Mike, good job.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we moved on then. The next was what's this blank piece of paper? What is this? Oh, this is the resolution. Here's the resolution. Right as I said, we passed this resolution unanimously. Okay, next was the report by Bob Colacola, Highway Superintendent. So we've had accumulation of 106 inches of snowfall so far, or I guess for the whole, whole season. Hopefully, that's the end of the season since he's taking the plows off the trucks. There's a picture of the new dump truck. And once he gets it licensed and roadworthy, then we'll be trading in the, the old dump truck. Whatever amount of money we can get for that, or I guess we're going to sell it on the market. As far as activities, a lot of maintenance is going on in the highway department. He has started the annual springtime repair of potholes with with a cold patch. And there's a variety of other things that the highways team did throughout the month. Then Scott took us through the monthly water report. Well, the key message here is that the new water filtration system continues to work on as a planned, expected. And everyone seemed to be very happy with how that progress, program, project has, has finished up. They're still working over there. They have a punch list of things they have to complete. Some odds and ends, but for all practical purposes, the plant is up and running and it's been error-free. There's been no interruption of service since it's gone online. So I'm very happy about that. Mike, any comments?
Just a comment of two things. First, that for the previous highway report that Bob mentioned the fact that he said the police vehicle, the police vehicle, excuse me, the dump truck that we've had for many years, while it has many miles on it, is still viable, running, and would make an excellent farm vehicle. So if there's any, anybody who's looking for an extra farm vehicle that they can have for probably a very inexpensive price compared to what they pay for any other used truck of this variety, just let the office know and you can put your offer in and be, be able to come and take a look at it as far as I can tell.
Nice sales pitch, Mike. Good. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And in terms of Scott, I think the, there are some, you know, there are some things that we're doing in order to be able to, you know, to finish up things such as repairing some gates and some fencing that was up previously that needs to be redone. And that was one of the last things that had to happen. And we haven't had any hiccups of any consequence with the water plant opening and with the new system being, being put online. So that's, that's good to know. We haven't sprung leaks. We haven't had to have to shut down the water to redo anything. So my thanks to the people at Mime's who did a lot of the work for the contract because it's seems to be running really well.
Agreed. And no, no, there's still out there. We just received another invoice from them. But where we are right now is we are petitioning New York State to release the final almost $300,000 of grant money that we need in order to pay our final bills. So that's in progress right now as we speak. Okay, that's the water plant. There's the trend over the past 24 months for water, for water usage. And then sewer. Okay, Scott next presented the sewer report. Here's some of the monthly work he's been doing as far as maintenance and repair. No real significant reports of any problems there either. All the sampling was within spec as usual. There's the trend of water sewage process through the plant. And then brought us to the point of what we need to do as far as financing the sewer plant. So I proposed last month that we make an increase to the sewer rates. And as we went through the budget process last Monday, we found that I'd recommended to increase the rates 20%. It looks like we really only need to increase them 16%, which is what this resolution said. The reason for the increase in sewer rates are the following. First off, it's been over five years since we've increased the rates at the sewer plant. Meanwhile, the cost of maintenance repair has gone up because it's a very old system. The system itself is about 45 years old and it's been about 10 years since we've been, made any significant upgrades to that system. And so as the system gets older, the cost for maintenance repair every year increases. So we had to make that statement just to get ourselves right in terms of standard maintenance and repair work. The other problem we have is that we have a carryover from previous years and need for additional repair and maintenance that wasn't in the budget that was actually beyond what we were receiving for sewer fees from the users. And we actually had to borrow about $60,000 from the general fund in order to pay some needed repairs at the sewer plant. And this actually goes back a year or two, and we need to pay that money back to the general fund. And so we need to increase the revenues we receive from the sewer operation in order to pay back those monies to the general fund. And the last reason we needed to increase the rates is because there are some necessary capital improvements required to be done at the sewer plant, which require some significant infrastructure changes. The Delaware Engineering is working on a plan now to propose to us what those improvements need to be in order to get up to stuff. And we expect to have to make some significant capital investments and get grant money from the county and the state, just as we did for the water infrastructure improvements. And these are long-term projects and we need to start building a reserve fund in the sewer budget to be able to prepare for paying for those future investments. So for those reasons, I'd requested the board to approve a rate increase for the sewer of about 16% effective with the new billing that's going to be happening in April. That's for those who are the general users. For those who only receive sewer service, we give them a flat rate, assume an estimated amount of usage gallons per quarter. We've increased that rate from 5,000 gallons per quarter to 6,300 with, because of the average usage per individual of 70 gallons per day. And so we're assuming those customers only have one person at the location. So it's kind of a generous on our side, but we have increased the estimated number of gallons per quarter from 5,000 to 6,300 for them. Mike, any comments about that sewer rate increase?
Just one comment, and that is having served on served on the Wapo Wapo Rogers Intermunicipal Council, I'm privy to a lot of the information of what the state and what the, what the Health Department, as well as what the DEC is requiring of municipalities up and down the Wapo Rogers Creek, which is our outlet for discharge. And it's quite plain that even though our Speedy's permit has been looked at every year, they haven't really increased a great deal of the mandates that they have for us to be able to, to be able to improve capital projects at the site, I think in deference to the fact that they know the work we were doing at the water treatment plant. But at this point, there are no unfunded mandates, but a lot of the suggestions they've made in the Speedy's permits over the years are the basis for what I think Delaware Engineering is is going to to escort. And consequently, as consequently, it was something that we were going to need to be able to adopt. And it's just a matter of getting, kind of getting ahead of it at this point because their suggestions will turn into unfunded mandates if we don't respond and, and try to do projects as we can afford them and as we can make it realistic in terms of spending. So
Yeah, yeah, certainly, certainly the archaic overflow retention facility we have to handle our excess sewage is, I would say high on the, on the docket in terms of things that DEC might come in and start saying we need to fix that. So I don't want to get hurt ahead of the curve of having them come in and help us by actually getting this thing going before they actually show up. So that's, that's the other reason why we want to get this thing going. We're looking to Delaware Engineer and just tell us what it is we need to be doing there to make that plant up. What it is we need to be doing there to make that plant up to stuff and what it's going to cost. Okay.
Yep.
All right, that resolution was uh. Presented to the board. It was unanimously approved at the meeting last Wednesday. Okay. Moving on, we went to the also the other thing I wanted to talk about as far as water and sewer is. I reviewed the uh list of delinquent accounts. We have eighty three thousand dollars. Of overdue. Bills to be paid for our water and sewer service. And so I'm going to work with V R I to figure out what we can do to. Help reduce that number of outstanding delinquencies. We have a process in place that. Uh, we do add on penalties and interest. For delinquent accounts. We do um add to the tax levy. Overdue bills. So we do eventually get the money. But it's a matter of there can be up to a year delay. Between when we send out the initial bill, we get finally reimbursement. From people either by paying the delinquent bills or by having their taxis taxes relevied. In which case that either we will get the money from the tax bills or we will. Uh, go to the Duchess County who will make good on those overdue bills and then they will seek. Reimbursement from the actual users at a future date. So we have a plan to get reimbursed for those overdue bills. It's just that there's a long delay. So I want to do whatever we can to reduce the time. Between when the bills are issued and when the payments are made. Okay. Treasuries report. Don't believe there's anything significant discussed here. We already talked about as far as the funds moving moving from the police vehicle fund. And the dump truck reserve. Which are highlighted down below. Those are simply monies we received from the bank as a loan. We applied those to pay the invoices. And now we have to pay the bank back over the next four years. Here's the tennis court fund. We have that reserve as we're trying to raise twenty five thousand dollars in order to uh afford to resurface the tennis courts. And that now is running around ten thousand dollars. So they're about forty percent of the way through the goal.
Uh, one more thing before you move there, Tim, is we're going to have a resolution. Uh, later on uh in the in our list of things to do here. Uh, and you might people who are looking at this, this may want to pay special attention to what's listed as the hate trust. Lamont Christmas tree uh fund and the nine partners. The nine partners fund because those are. Those are funds which go back literally decades. That have been sitting in savings accounts and most of those accounts. Have been come with codicils that say we can't spend the principles but can only spend the interest. And due to the almost miniscule amount of income that we get. From those accounts, we've been. Almost unable to use them. And the last time the state came in and ordered at us uh back in two thousand seventeen. They said that we should be not keeping those accounts around unless we're actually using them. So the resolution that uh that we're going to be talking about later twenty 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 one dash zero zero five. Is going to combine all of those. The all three of those accounts into one. One amount and then hopefully we can uh be able to secure having all of those accounts put into the A fund and use them. For appropriate purposes as reflected in whatever the trust fund was given to us for in the first place.
Let's talk about that right now. So here it is, resolution twenty twenty one dash oh five. Resolution determining the restrictions applicable to the hate trust Lamont Christmas tree trust and nine partners trust to be impractical, impossible to achieve and waste. So we went through this resolution. Um, we just it's a four page. It talks about. You know, where these things originated. Here's the hate for us goes back to nineteen thirty. The Lamont crust back to nineteen forty three. I think the nine partners, they weren't really sure. Where it was. Originated. But we did do a lot of research to try to figure out what was the source of it. The bottom line is, as Mike said. These funds are basically unusable. With the conditions that were applied. So the proposal was. That we pass this resolution. Let me go to the end here. This is posted online. You can go through the the words if you want to. It's posted on Zoom on the village website. Now therefore be resolved, the village board hereby determines the restrictions contained in the gift instruments. Um, are impractical, impossible to achieve and wasteful because the income produced by these funds is insufficient to fund any village improvement or project. And so what we're saying is that um. The board determines it intends to use the principal interest of the funds in the hate trust for general public improvements within the village. It tends to use the principal interest of the funds of Lamont Christmas tree trust for holiday decorations in the village. It tends to use the principal interest of the funds and nine nine partners trust for general public improvements within the village. All right. So what we've done is we've directed the village attorney. To petition the New York State Attorney General. We wish to have these funds moved over to our general fund. And the Attorney General's Office has ninety days to respond if they have any objection to it. If not, then we will execute this uh this resolution. And this thing was put to a vote and was passed by all the trustees who are in attendance. So basically, that's what we proceeded to do to try to move these three trusts into something that the village can actually use for the even sense that we can figure out where. Initially determined to be the purpose of it. So Michael Ross out there.
Yeah, I think that I just thought before we moved on from that other chart that since it listed the actual amounts that. Be able to talk about it then. So you.
And the totals from the three funds. Is forty three thousand dollars if you spend the time adding up the. Hate crust fifteen. Lamont tree about twenty five hundred. And the nine partners about twenty five thousand. So the total is like forty three thousand dollars. Okay. Uh, next Sarah gave us the building department report. Were no significant comments there. And next was the attorney's report was basically this resolution which we discussed and executed and approved. And again, this is all listed online. So you're happy to go through and read the four pages. At your leisure. And then before we got to village updates, trusty updates. I did spend a minute talking about the Jena Farms LLC because there's a lot of interest expressed around the town. And I just want to make the point that this is really a town issue. With the caveat, and actually they've asked to be the lead agency. For the assessments for the proposal. We as a village have said that we agree. Uh, but we are an interested agency in that we need to know. What's going on with their waste treatment? And we want to guarantee that there is no possibility of. Risk of um. The discharge from their waste treatment facility could contaminate. Our water source. Because it's in the same general region of the town. And so that's really our primary concern from a village point of view. Is that whatever they do over there. Their sewage treatment activity cannot contaminate our water source in any way, shape or form. And Mike, you're actually been heading up for the village board. The uh review of those plans, even though they're preliminary, but working with Delaware Engineering, correct?
Yeah, what I what I just my background so that people are aware of that. I had a I was I was contacted by the developer of this. His name is Will Gudera. And he we had a phone conversation for approximately half an hour. Uh, discussing the project itself. I allayed to him my concerns, our concerns representing the village of two things, A. The level of water consumption that we thought would be coming out of that project. And the impact it might have because. As you pointed out, one of the two strains that we have that provide our water. Uh, basically are in this in that recharge recharge area. And it's not not just the contamination of that of that stream potentially, but also the amount of water they might need for their current plans. They were both concerns, but. Realistically, I understood that we needed hy- hydrologist and a set of engineers. Who could look over their proposal and intelligently be able to see what the impact was based on our infrastructure. So the last week, I know that. Uh, people at Delaware Engineering use the file that was forwarded to us. Of of all of the current plans, but the response back from the from the engineers was that they needed more detailed. Uh, information on where some of the things like the wells, where are they going to be drilled? Uh, the wastewater treatment plant, where is it actually going to be placed on the property? And what structures are going to be placed on the property and in what location to be able to really. Uh, doing it to do a thorough job and give us a recommendation on what might happen. So. Uh, we need to get that information and I have to be able to have a. Will be able to provide that for us. He in the conversation did say that he would like to have our engineers work with. Um, from from Delaware Engineering and his engineers from Chazen to work together to try to hopefully come up with. A plan that would guarantee the concerns we have about the water usage and the. Make sure that nothing gets contaminated in the process. So. I'm hopeful that that he was sincere and that wish and that. Uh, you know, when as the project is considered that that's that we can work with them to be able to make sure we can. Keep our village water uh sacrosanct and not have to worry about any kind of effects from whatever project is eventually. Considered and either passed or not passed by the town.
Good. Okay, while we're in the updates, that was one of your key updates. What what was the other update? You talked about the work you're doing to respond back to Duchess County planning regarding. The sidewalk improvement, right?
Yeah, um, the things I attended a Zoom meeting with C A C. Uh, as part of my notes, I attended the town board meeting where this district overlay was was proposed. At Migdale, the project we just discussed. Uh, the we I put together the police reform package that is that was approved at the meeting. And the other thing that I had was I created a photograph album of pictures. Of needed sidewalk repairs to forward to Duchess County planning in order to apply for a grant that will take effect in two thousand twenty two grants. That will be actually be executed from two thousand twenty one have already been. Applications already been put in and approved or not approved. So we won't qualify for any funding until two thousand twenty two, but. The in having been in contact with these Duchess County planning, they it's asked that we send along pictures to see. What the repairs are like and to see if we would qualify under the funds they have available for help, uh, even if it's in. And I'm not sure at this point what kind of percentage of. Funding they would be able to give, whether it's a hundred percent of whatever the costs were, or we would have something that we that we would be. Need to put in ourselves, but uh that's that's happening this week and hopefully uh. You know, they'll consider it in the next few weeks and then get back to us and. If they say that we are available, then we'll go ahead and put in an application in the course of the year.
Okay, good. Uh, other comments from the trustees, Vicky brought forward a proposal from uh. An outside company who wants to. Uh, is put in install electric vehicle charging stations. And so she's working with the M B A. On whether that proposal, which supposedly is of no cost to the village. Whether that's viable and if so, we're in the village, we would want to put. All electric vehicle charging stations. Um, so she's working on that. I don't recall any of the comments from any of the trustees. Do you, Mike?
Uh, Buffy was working, but I'm trying to remember Buffy was working on being able to uh in conjunction with with. Trustee Cantino on being able to also help in that research on the charging stations. So she was part of that. And she was also uh working on on something else. I don't remember exactly what it was, uh, but. I apologize, I should, but I don't have it written down here as part of my notes, so I'm not sure. But she was also working on uh something else as well.
Okay. It escapes me as well. Apologize to Buffy for that. And as far as the things I had to discuss, one of them was a request from the town. To start holding um tennis clinics at the tennis courts this summer. Um, early in the morning between eight and nine A M. And the board had no problem with that. She's going to give us some specific schedules once they firm that up. As well as post a sign on the tennis court. Just to say that between eight and nine on a couple of days a week during the summer, June and July. They'll be holding tennis clinics. So the courts will be not available for general public use. And the court, the the trustees were okay with them. Um, second thing, I got a a letter from a resident outside the village asking. To uh if we have sufficient handicap parking spaces in the village. So Vicky has agreed to go off and first off assess what's the requirements. In the law for us to have handicap parking, where, how often, what what density? And how the villages is situated there. So she'll give us a report back when she's done that review. And the third thing, just wanted the public to know that T Mobile. Which is one of the three groups that have uh antenna on our water tower. Is going to be there in the next few weeks replacing their antenna. So you will see activity up there. Um, last week and the week before Verizon was there replacing the dead transmitter. They were out there a couple of days, I think. Um, but so T Mobile will be coming over the next few weeks. So you'll see more activity. At the water tower. They're only going to be replacing the antennas. They they made a request to us. To make some upgrades to their antennas as well as to put in a generator. At the base, and that's a more significant discussion. We've asked them to put that off until we've had a chance to understand the details. Of uh. Jeez. Sorry about that. And so we'll let you know more details as we get a firm plan from T Mobile in terms of what their future improvements are, they want to make to their operations at the water tower. And um. I think that's all I had. Mike, anything else?
Uh, just to let people know, coming up, we are going to be having uh budget meetings. Later on today on through Zoom to so we'll be discussing the expenditures for two thousand twenty one twenty two. From I believe is today is highway and police. Is that accurate?
That's actually highway and fire rescue.
High highway and fire rescue.
Wednesday, Wednesday will be the police in the front office.
Right, police in the front office. Uh, so the plan is to be able to 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 have those to have those meetings. Uh, and basically the uh they'll be on Zoom. So. Um, if you had questions after seeing what the budgets are, you can certainly post those so they can be answered. We're going to be having meetings next week as well in order to be able to finalize. The budget and we want to have the budget finalized for a public hearing by April seventh. So that we can go forward with with it. We have to have the budget uh voted on, approved by May first, so that. Submit it. So that that's the plan that stands now for anybody who is interested uh in input.
And because of those uh. Those are budget meeting schedules that roll into April. I uh. Have asked that we remove we move the next month's board meeting. Instead of the second Wednesday of the month to the third Wednesday, which is the twenty first. So that'll be the the new the the April, but uh board meeting will be April twenty first. Which will be the third Wednesday as opposed to the second Wednesday. Okay, I did have a section in the agenda where I asked for public comment. Um, and actually there was no public comment. So I just wanted to know that we will on for future meetings, make sure there's an item line item for public comment in the agenda. Um, other than that, that's all we discussed. And with that, we took a motion to adjourn the meeting. So Mike, I think we can wrap up, correct?
Yeah, I'd say so. That that's about it. We didn't go into a decadent session and we had no other discussions post. So that's it.
And just so people know that for the future. Um, we have now set up these Zoom scheduling so that the recording is automatic as opposed to necessitating me. Actually starting the recording. So therefore we should not have this mistake happen in the future. I apologize. And I appreciate the consideration that this is the best we could do as far as given the people who watch Channel twenty two. Some semblance of what happened at last week's board meeting. Okay, thank you, and we'll talk to you later. Thank you. Bye.
Take care. Bye.